Ben, could you go ahead and call roll?
Yes. Swift? Kelly? Here. Jansen?
Yeah.
Green?
Here.
Gonzales Parver?
Here.
And Sharon Newton?
Here.
Thank you. So we have a one-page document here and a very small agenda, but I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda from one of the commissioners if they so desire.
Motion to approve the agenda as is.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
I heard Phil motion and, sorry, Commissioner Green motion and Commissioner Swift's second. And I'll note for the minutes that Commissioner Frigoso has started this as well. Hi.
Hello.
And all in favor of approving the agenda as posted, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed, so unanimous. Ben, I believe you are going to present this item.
Yes, with the assistance from Andy Flower from EMC. So let me get started. Your commission last discussed the housing element along with odds at their June 17 meeting. And during the course of the time that EMC and staff has been working on that, we have met with, we've had over a dozen meetings with the laundry list of town committees and other agencies that you see in the staff report. Most recently, we were at the food pantry on Saturday and at the farmer's market last night, which was really eye-opening. It's very interesting to have one-on-one discussions with people, residents, young and old, current and former residents, and just hear what their needs are and realize that those needs change over time. And it's also a recognition too that there are people from many different cultural backgrounds. We're in the process of getting some translation done on some outreach materials that we're going to be circulating in the community shortly. So it really is a very broad discussion and it drives home the fact that many, many people are very challenged to either try to live in this community or continue to live in this community. And I would also put out a request to anybody watching this that they log on and join in the discussion online at FairfaxSpeaks.com. That's our housing, all things housing element website. So please, if you haven't done so already, we'd love to hear from you. And I think you'll be excited as we get into this meeting to see that we have some new interactive features that we'll be rolling out very shortly. The Planning Commission Housing Element Subcommittee also met on this on last Thursday. So we've been busy with them. And I think your commission, the commission members who did attend, Newton and Swift, thank you very much. We'll see some of the comments and direction that they offered or suggestions that they offered rather to staff incorporated into the material provided tonight. I will also say that we, your commission has what has been a concurrent project, the objective design and development standards are odds that they've been reviewing. And most recently, that was considered at a July 29 special meeting by the commission. So you will also see some information that's been transferred through from that. And obviously, these two efforts are closely alive because the objective design and development standards are an effort for the town to retain or maximize local control over multifamily development, which is what a lot of what we're talking about with this housing element update. So with that, I will turn the next portion of the meeting over to Andy Flower. Andy, take it away.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I'll begin my presentation now. This is our only second meeting with the Planning Commission. We're happy to be here again this evening and we've got some momentum. We're beginning with the site analysis and we're looking forward to your participation. The guidance we got from the Affordable Housing Committee was that everything is on the table until it's not. So we're excited to have some very honest discussions throughout this process of site options analysis. Contributing to the evaluation process, tonight we'll talk about the constraints-based map, structures with one exit route, prior opportunity sites, zoning map here at the Town of Fairfax, the odds map that will be very familiar to you, and of course, public comments. So we're beginning with this initial HES map. And this is an iterative tool that they've just begun working out how it all fits together. This is an important map for us to continue to be acquainted with because we'll be able to export directly from this map to HCD when we have our housing element ready to go. So this is their first iteration of showing us constrained sites and potential sites. Now, the constrained sites, not all of them are equally inhibitive. And that means that with the next iterative cycle of this HES tool, we're going to notice up to 629 sites potentially changing from red to yellow. And those are sites that are in floodplains or in landslide areas. And these are considered mitigatable constraints. Eventually, we'll be getting to the adequate sites and those are ones that we will be selecting through our full analysis. The fact that there aren't any adequate sites automatically selected for us means that there's no easy site here. There's no site that when they list, when they did their first brush analysis in some cities and towns, there were obvious adequate sites for what we're trying to do. For ours, now, what that means is that as a town, this is in your hands. You've got nobody dictating to you that these are obvious adequate sites. Instead, we'll be working together to discover which sites are most reflective of the town values and goals. So just a quick breakdown numbers-wise, they're showing that there's at least 2,000 sites that require a little more investigation. And if you have any questions about what is considered constrained, and I know that with the RENA appeal letter, there was definitely concern about the minimal number of constrained sites due to fire risk. And I have some backup data if anybody's interested in asking those questions. And if, if the Chair so desires for this to be a little more informal and that those questions could be asked now, and Ben, if that's okay with you, I could open it to Commissioner questions now or we can continue moving forward.
I think that's fine.
If somebody just wants to raise their hand in the Zoom if they want to say something, then we can keep track. Thanks.
I see that Commissioner Green has a question.
Very quick, could you just define an adequate site? Thank you.
Certainly. That's a great question and it's the one piece that I didn't copy and paste verbatim for how they define it. But generally, it would mean that, well, it will mean going forward that it is a site that the town recognizes as adequate for fulfilling the additional density necessary to meet our RENA number. And there are, there are things that define that, like at minimum 20 dwelling units per acre as a density. And of course, that's a little bit challenging in the Town of Fairfax because we don't have density requirements within our, within our commercial corridor. So this is all just to give a little introduction about what, so that it doesn't look unfamiliar when we come back to revisit it.
Andy?
Yes?
I saw Commissioner Jansen had his hand up too.
Oh, excuse me. I don't have it on gallery. I didn't see that.
Yeah, I used the electronic hand, so maybe you don't see that. That's okay. You mentioned earlier that you expect that a number of the red sites, the constrained sites, will become potential yellow. Did I hear you say that you thought about 600 of those 900 will become potentials?
That's, that's an estimation that is probably more broad than conservative. So just by looking through what their criteria will be going forward and that they mentioned that floodplain sites and landslide sites, because there are ways to mitigate for that, then it's high likelihood that those 629 sites that are now red for those reasons may turn yellow.
And they is?
Oh, a bag.
Yeah. The, and then on your map, you have not on the HES map. What does that mean if it's not on the HES map? Is excluded from review or?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
On the map that was part of the packet, there are some areas that are, you're not showing it here, but it is not on the HES map. You mentioned it early on in your presentation. What does that mean? Does it mean they are excluded from review or evaluation? Or what does that mean?
Did I, I'm sorry, but I'm not recalling saying that something would not be on the HES map.
So in our packet, and Ben, you might be able to help us here, there's an attachment A. And it has the HES map, but there are a couple of properties that have crosshatches. For example, where you have on the very far lower left of the map, the end there, there's actually a continuation on this map of an area that is not depicted.
Hmm, I see.
Yeah, I can explain that. What happened was when our very thorough GIS person was translating the HES data to our own GIS system, she noted that there were areas within town that were not included on the HES map. And so for example, that site that you mentioned, Chair Newton, on the lower far left of the map on our version incorporates Elliott Preserve. So in looking at that, I decided to leave it on because it is a more accurate depiction and it obviously would be highly constrained were it included on the HES map. In the fullness of time, we may ask them to incorporate that. But it's obviously not, it's as permanently dedicated public open space, it's never going to be considered for a developable site and has numerous other constraints besides, not the least of which we don't own it. But in any event.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I see that Commissioner Swift has their hand raised.
Can you explain the different types of constraints that go into the red areas? Priority, open space, things like that. Can you just cover all the constraints?
I can. And I'm going to be speaking directly from the metadata. And with the next iterative map, it's probably going to be a little more user-friendly, at least when it, when they talk about potential sites. But as far as constrained sites, there are 46 sites that are understood as California Protected Areas, 361 sites that are understood as Critical Habitat via the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. I mentioned a total of 629 in floodplain and landslide. There's 217 under floodplain and 412 understood as landslide. There's 17 that are understood as having liquefaction concerns and a total of 28 that are understood as some level of fire risk.
So later on, that would be helpful to have that broken out.
Happy to share that. Absolutely. And I should mention too that there are some sites that might have overlap. In other words, they may have, they may be constrained for more than one reason. So moving on to the analysis that the town and EMC have, have, although this one specifically was done by Jill with, with, with the town. And this shows how, this shows all the areas with, all the structures with only one way out. So we began with the concern for evacuation while the safety element was being updated. And so this is a lens through which we definitely want to maybe first consider all of the sites within the town. Ben, I don't know if you wanted to speak to any detail about this, the length of the one-way out or anything like that?
Right. Well, what you will see later on in this presentation is the Willow neighborhood, even though ostensibly it currently allows duplex zoning by right. We have removed it for consideration from any further intensification due to the fact that, as we well know, there is only one way in, one way out. Furthermore, Willow is a very narrow road, which effectively almost functions in a one-way capacity due to the number of vehicles that are parked on it. So those are examples of where we've already looked at and are already incorporating evacuation risk into our analysis of potential multifamily sites. This also underscores, when you look at the Cascade Drive area, that there's a mile and a half of Cascade that has dozens and dozens of homes, that there's only one way in, one way out. Ignoring for the fact that it's single-family residential zoning, we would definitely not be considering that area for further intensification due to those constraints and the distance it has to go till we get to the primary evacuation slash point of refuge area ostensibly on Sir Francis Drake.
And I see Chair Newton and Commissioner Swift's hands up. Are either of you wanting to speak?
Yeah, Ben, can you just explain the yellow lines?
Yes, I, what that refers to is where we're attempting to determine where paper streets are, where existing streets are in fact paper streets, streets that have been dedicated but never built. And so we're adding to our knowledge of what may in fact actually be a one-way street. So that's work in progress.
Thank you, Ben. Commissioner Swift?
So, and I know this, as you said, this is a work in progress, but the one-way in, one-way out map doesn't have street names on it. And so I, and there's things like our evacuation maps that we have. We also have, there's other maps out there that already kind of show this kind of information where you would look at a map, see the street name and can follow its paths to Sir Francis Drake. So I was wondering, on this map, are you being, is the intent to be somewhat selective in how you approach this? Or are you basically going to come up with a map that shows all the streets that have one way in, one way out?
Um, our, our.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, our intent is to show every length of street for which there's only one way in, one way out. So if, and this, this presentation will be posted on the Fairfax Speaks website. And if, remember Swift, if you would like to get a copy of this where you could blow it up, I'd be happy to do that. And if you notice any additions or have questions about any segment, we're happy to get that feedback because part of, you know, the challenge is ground truthing. As we said, what we've been, what our GIS person has been doing is actually taking the Google cameras and going up to the street and going, okay, there's where the pavement ends. It's a little bit time-consuming. So if people have a better idea of what's what and there's things we've missed, by all means, let us know.
Yeah, I would like a copy of the PDF.
Commissioner Jansen and Commissioner Kelly, I see both of your hands raised. Would one of you like to speak?
Just a short, simple, detailed question. I see some really short stretches of one-way street. What is the minimum cutoff? Like, what's the minimum length to be considered a one-way street?
That's a great question. We didn't have a minimum. We just basically, wherever we saw something that you base, you know, it could be a cul-de-sac or a court, which many of these are, as you know. So wherever it was, basically, the way you, way you drive out is the way you drive in. And that's your only option. We include that or attempted to.
Okay.
Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you. What's, what's the nuance, Ben, for where you chose to start and stop those one-way in, one-way out roads? And I'm just looking at the Cascade neighborhood as an example. It looks like it stops before it gets out to Bolinas. So is there some sort of criteria you use to actually stop that at that point?
Yes, as soon as, for example, on Cascade, as soon as you have the alternative of forest or one of the other ways that you could go laterally before, in order to hit Sir Francis Drake. Now, that's not to say that Cascade is not the recommend, Cascade is the recommended evacuation route. That's, Commissioner Swift referred to that. And what we may want to do is, is create some kind of a layer that shows where there's something that may be one way, one way out. Obviously, for the people who live on that one-way in, one-way out portion, that is the evacuation route. But there are also other considerations in terms of which ones feed into the larger arterials and eventually get out to Sir Francis Drake.
Commissioner Frigoso? I believe you're muted.
There we go, unmuted. Thanks, Andy. I had a question about, sort of about one-way streets. I live on Mirna and when we had a fire up on Prest last year, I remember cars kind of driving the circle around the hill, coming up and down Mirna and the fire engines and the chief's big fire Subaru trying to get up Mirna when all the cars were coming down. And so they were blocking each other from going anywhere and the fire truck had to back up or one of the cars had to back up. And I'm wondering, I'm sure that happens in other places. These are supposed to be two-way streets, but the narrowness of it with parking all along the street means if you've got people going two ways at night, that doesn't work. So I just put that out there. I don't need an answer, but maybe someone can keep that in mind and we can discuss it at another time.
Yeah, we're, we're actually trying to figure out a way we can incorporate pavement width into this analysis. It's a little bit tricky. We're trying to see if there's any data sources for that. It may be a longer-term project, but it certainly is a challenge. And Fairfax is a community of, for the most part, narrow streets, which as we know from a standpoint of emergency access and evacuation presents additional challenges.
Commissioner Gonzales Parver?
Yes. I was just thinking about the Paradise Fire and how the situation got so dire there that people just started to get out of their cars and run for their lives. And I'm assuming that this takes into account evacuation routes by car. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I just, I happen to live on Cascade and I've noticed that by foot, if you do go to the Elliott Preserve, you can act, there is an act, there's a way out to Bolinas on foot. I'm just wondering if anybody eventually will look at evacuation on foot or, you know, pedestrian evacuation in a, because I'm just thinking about, trying to, exactly what Norma said, you know, getting a bottleneck and not being able to move at all and the panic situation that would occur. I mean, don't want to think negatively, but in a worst-case scenario, I think people will just start running. And it would be good to know if there's another way out, you know, the opposite way. So just.
That's, that's a very challenging question. I know that the fire people typically say stay in your cars.
Yeah.
Because a car can handle a couple hundred degrees of extra heat, whereas people, cars represent a kind of a heat shield. But if the way is blocked, what do you do? And to me, that's, that's an additional challenge and something that, again, staff is acutely aware, upper Cascade, the challenges that it represents versus really almost any other neighborhood in the town, some of the hillside areas, because it's such a long way from what might be considered a point of refuge. I do know that, you know, they really discourage people from going on foot. They say in emergencies, oftentimes, the people that don't make it are the people that abandon their vehicles. But there are scenarios where we know people simply are not going to be able to drive their cars. So it's, it's work in progress. And I think that's a question that as we go forward with conversations with the Marin Welfare Prevention Authority and even as we develop this housing element and look at constraints, that those are the type of concerns and questions. We're also updating our safety element. So you know, what, how do we provide for that public safety in various areas of the town? It's a good question.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to remind us that we're focused on housing and safety. And for housing, we're going to have to make sure that any sites where we're encouraging additional density and homes are accessible, right? And I think in terms of the safety element, it's certainly appropriate to focus on the, not only the road in and out, but also the network of trails within the, within the town that we already have identified in a trail map that the volunteers and John Reed have spent decades putting together and trying to figure out where trails had been blocked and where they could repair steps and things like that. So that's been an ongoing process within the town. We actually have a trail map that is supposed to show us where all those different trails are, so I think that's a really good point. I think we should make sure that for the safety element, that that's incorporated in this as well. I think for the housing element, I'm less convinced.
Thank you, Chair Newton. That's, that's an excellent suggestion and one that we'll follow up on. And we see a hand from Commissioner Green.
Yeah, I kind of want to, at this point, add to all this and note that all of the comments from the commissioners and seniors say, well, there's a way to Sir Francis Drake and there's another way to Sir Francis Drake and there's one way out of here, see? When you get to San Anselmo already, there are two ways. You can go down Sir Francis Drake and the Miracle Mile. There's two directions. So we have a very, so like all this, all the area in, how do I describe it on your map? All the area in the, I guess, the wall property, the, you know, the slide area. I don't know, I can't throw a question out now, what's going on with the wall, wall property, I guess. But anyway, this is, this is the issue, is that we have to be very careful what we do with density because there is one route. And the evacuation maps all show going east on that route. So the like, what everybody's saying is very likely to occur if there were really a huge problem. And that is everybody going on one road at the same time. Now, maybe it'd be, you know, maybe the police will put on white gloves and everything will be directed terrific and perfect. Never seen it, but anyhow, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody who participated in that discussion. Very helpful. So just reiterating, this is the first lens through which we want to consider properties for inclusion with the, with the site options analysis. This, this would be the second thing that we're considering, and that's looking back at the fifth element, the fifth cycle for the housing element, and acknowledging those sites that have been considered in the past and reacquainting ourselves with those sites and doing analysis about what it would take for these sites to, to be developed within the next eight-year cycle, which is especially important. Through HCD's eyes, if they are to see any site being used again, they require due diligence and, and some innovation, some ideas for how, how to connect the dots and how to entice development in, in this next cycle. So Ben, this is a pretty exciting map that, that you directed your GIS person Jill to put together. Do you want to describe it? You do so well.
Yeah, this is part of the fun of having access to some really good geographic information system data. And also, the, the process of doing the community, widespread community outreach. We actually got this idea from the Climate Action Committee, and the town's recently adopted Climate Action Plan. That has a very aggressive vision for having all houses in town that are all electric and, and basically zero net use, energy consumption. And so then the question is, well, what do we have in town in terms of older buildings, which we were able to determine, on larger lots? And this is, and so what we did was, we sat down with Jill, our GIS person, and threw a couple of parameters around that discussion. And so what you see here is the first iteration of houses on property that are, the houses themselves are at least 70 years old. And as we know, energy codes weren't adopted until the 1970s. So what that means is that pretty much all of those houses, unless they've been retrofitted and remodeled, are pretty leaky. People didn't understand doing insulation and, and, you know, void and things like that. So those are the houses that you look at to say, okay, if you're going to try to make buildings more energy efficient, you would probably start with the oldest buildings. As we know, regular wooden-framed houses also tend to get somewhat dilapidated over time. I mean, all things do. And so when you get back three-quarters of a century, the question might be asked, you know, are those structures ripe for renovation? Finally, we looked at the size of the parcels. And what this ties into is the notion in our, both in our current zoning about duplexes, where the zoning ordinance currently says that duplexes are only allowed on parcels that are 7,000 square feet or more. And so we said, well, let's take a look at which parcels are 7,000 square feet or more. We also put a parameter around it just to make sure we're not into an area that would probably engender a lot of challenges, which has to do with slope. So these are in the flatland portions of Fairfax only. So that red boundary represents the flatland areas up to a maximum of 10% slope. And the idea is to say, these are the, likely to be the least environmentally constrained, certainly the most, the least challenging from a standpoint of what does it take to construct or reconstruct on the, on these sites. This came up in the conversation your commission and subcommittee members will recall, where we were talking about the possibility of considering quadplexes in our current duplex zone. And it's important to put a context around that conversation. What we were referring to is this idea that in the town, we have a maximum residential size limit of 3,500 square feet. We know that somebody currently in the R, in the RD 5.5 to 7 zone can come in with a duplex, and it would be a building permit process. It's a multifamily development. There's no discretionary review. This is something for consideration as we go forward with the odds. I think we'd all like to have some input in what that structure looks like. But in any event, if you, if, for example, you started with a maximum-sized structure of 3,500 square feet, it's been noted, in fact, just the other day, I was riding through a neighborhood that was all larger homes, and every single one of them had four or five cars in the driveway. It just tends to be one of those situations where every person in the family has a car. And so the consideration was, if we are looking at that type of need for parking or demand for parking, parking generated, and we're in these zones allowed, somebody's allowed to put in a duplex by right, the question is, could we consider that for a quadplex? And the idea being that we wouldn't be adding to the mass of the building on the site. We would simply be dividing it into smaller units. So just using the 3,500-square-foot example, you could have one 3,500-square-foot house, you could have two 1,750-square-foot duplexes, or you could have four 875-square-foot quadplexes. And what happens, of course, as you go to smaller units, you begin to achieve what is referred to as affordability by design, which means that without any other restrictions, as you get into smaller living spaces, the market rent for those spaces gets to be lower, and so it becomes more affordable. Now, some people would say, well, that's because they're more cramped. And, and I guess I would say, in today's context, you're going to have a trade-off somewhere or other. But in any event, that's what we've done so far, and this is a reflection of the conversations we've had with various parties, including, as we said, the Climate Action Committee, the Odds Subcommittee, and the Planning Commission Subcommittee. And we wanted to introduce that for discussion tonight, because we believe with the dozens of sites that are in these locations, that are currently in our duplex zone, that are large lots, that are relatively unconstrained from a standpoint of slope, that typically are not one-way in, one-way out. I believe, Andy, actually, I think we disqualified anything that was one-way in, one-way out, even though I do see some on the lower stretches of Willow, so I might have to retract that statement until we do further analysis. But the, the discussion that we wanted to bring before your commission, and we're in the middle of this presentation right now, but as we go forward, and you saw this in the staff report, is, is this something that the commission believes is worthy of consideration? Where we take our current duplex zoning and we consider quadplexes, where the structures themselves are no larger than the duplexes? And I would also segue this conversation into, this discussion is actually occurring on a statewide level, and they are planning to have a discussion called Missing Middle Housing. I introduced that at the Planning Commission meeting on the 29th, where we were discussing our objective design and development standards. And this notion of trying to segue away from single-family residential and to provide a broader basis for housing in our community, and especially housing that probably has the best fit for Fairfax as a whole. So that's my rather long-winded presentation, and I see several hands going up. So I don't know whose hand was up. I'll just start from the top. Commissioner Green?
Thanks. So, you know, this map makes a lot of logical sense to me, because it, it's, it's an age thing. I mean, there are, it's funny, there are TV shows lauding historical houses because of their architecture. So that's another, you know, thing to consider. Pre-19, there's a 1907 house on our street, so. And, and they missed it. It's not on this map. But interestingly, I think, you know, you hit upon a factor that is fairly objective to take into consideration. But obviously, in these particular districts, the look and feel of that quadruplex is going to need, is going to be of paramount importance. I also have a feeling that in the old days, if you built a duplex, it was a bit bulkier and squarer than it is today possible. Today, I think it's, you can put some design in there, even though it's low-cost housing. And then I had a question, if I may. If some, so there's, there's this sort of, because it's small, it's cheap idea. But we have a RENA requirement, and all of this, I think, is driven by that RENA requirement. And we're not shying away from it, or at least I'm not. I think, you know, we have, for, for me, it's workforce housing. I really am into, you know, getting some more workforce housing here, because here we are, Fairfax, we're pretty remote. We've got people coming from Bulejo and Paloma, and it's harder to get here. You know, some of the, closer to San Rafael and closer to freeway, it's not as bad. But here, we need to have our own workforce housing, I think, because it's one of the elements that the economists for, since 1990, when I've been attending the, the Economic Forum, have been, you know, decrying as we don't have workforce housing. So this makes sense. And does that qualify for RENA? If, if so, they, they build a quadruplex and no RENA, no applications, no, no, you know, dedication and deeds, nothing happens, but the people are paying sort of the rent RENA talks about. And so does that qualify? I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I can't quite get my finger on that. Thanks.
Well, early indicators, as applied to accessory dwelling units and junior sex, junior accessory dwelling units, are that yes, there is a kind of a gradation when they've done surveys of actual rents on those, those type of units, that some are very low, some are low, some are moderate, and, and actually, the smallest fraction are market rate. So I believe that depending, it would probably require some analysis, but I believe based on size, we could very well make that argument. Okay, and then starting from the top again, Commissioner Fregoso?
Thank you. I really like this idea. I think it begins to target a comment I made early on when we were talking about our goals and objectives, to create housing for all segments of the population, all sizes of housing, all, all prices of housing for people. And so I think this is a wonderful way to, to meet that, to provide that opportunity by allowing duplexes and quads in single-family zones. It, it also reaches a level of affordability that doesn't require a, a city subsidy. Those of you who understand housing development know that it costs half a million dollars just to build a place, not counting the cost of the land. That's just what it is. No one is out there building affordable housing because it's a moneymaker or that anyone breaks even. And so having these smaller units would be a real boon to more affordable worker and, and perhaps even, they may even be rental housing. Not everyone can afford to buy a house. The other thing is that I love the idea of hanging a hat somewhere on a old housing retrofit and, and rehab for energy efficiency. Because it has been proven, and I, I won't go into the details. You can call me if you need proof. But it has been proven that if we were able to retrofit all our old inefficient, leaking CO2-emitting housing units around our country, that we would meet the required CO2 emissions reductions, simply by doing that. We don't need to put solar on every house. It's great for people who can do that, but not everyone can. And so, again, I think this is a really cost-effective way, and we should be able to write that up. And I, I can't believe that the state of California would not accept the fact in this day and age that retrofit of homes reduces greenhouse gas emissions more effectively than anything else, the electrification of homes. So I love that double whammy. And the other thing about these units that, Ben, as you mentioned, a 3,500-square-foot house is a large family home, and you can be sure they've got three, four, five, six cars there at all times. And yet, what do we require? We require one garage, one off-street parking, and if we're lucky, you get, they take up the street parking. If we went with the duplex or tri or quadplex unit, each one would be required to have its own little parking space. So we're ahead of the game in terms of going to the community and saying, you know, everyone says, oh, we can't park. There's no parking. We don't want any more houses because nobody can park. Well, this is a solution that starts to get at that problem in a, in a development standard form that, again, does not require that this town has to put up money that we just don't have to develop, develop this affordable housing. So I'm very excited to see us going in this direction.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Jansen?
Yeah, thank you. Well, well, let me start with concurring with that. I think we had those discussions indeed before. The duplexes and the quadplexes as an infill in the existing housing stock is probably the very best way to actually add housing. We've discussed it, you know, it doesn't change the scale of the town, but yet you can accommodate additional units in the right price class. So I think that's absolutely one of the best ways to, to meet our goals. The map we're looking at, I, I love maps and I find it fascinating, but I think there's a problem with it. Construction technologies in the 60s and the 70s were significantly worse than what they built pre-1940. So the concept that age is an indicator for the state of the building, I believe is flawed. It would be great if you could skift it that way, but I think the, you have to look at it case by case. Because there's a lot more complexity to it, and apart from the fact that an older home could be, you know, a good addition in the street, it can actually be that it is in a much better state, even energy-wise, than a built-up was home in 1963. So I, I'd be very careful to use a broad brush like this to identify potential sites. I don't think that will work. But again, back to the beginning, the quadplex-duplex approach is, I believe, absolutely the way to solve that problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jansen, and we will update that. We can provide more age cohorts. So we will look at those 60s and 70s. I think our main driver for that was just consideration of houses that were ripe for rehabilitation. But let's face it, things that were built in the 60s, which are pre-energy codes, are still a half a century old. And as you note, may have been built kind of in a mass-produced, post-World War II fashion that doesn't necessarily lend itself to energy-efficient or other items of that nature. Let's see. Commissioner Swift?
I'm interested in finding out how many parcels we have in town that are unimproved. That's something I haven't seen yet. So I would be interested in, in knowing that. The second thing, along with this map, I agree with Commissioner Jansen that I don't think age of a parcel, or I mean, age of the building on a parcel is indicative of anything that would relate it to wanting to have quadplex, duplex on it. I would be very careful in looking at these parcel by parcel to see what the surrounding parcels are. If we went down this road, I would definitely want to have off-street parking for anything we do here, considering all of the other safety issues we have. And I just also want issues we have. And I just also want to make the point that all of these parcels are not vacant. So there are people living in these pre-forty, pre-fifty, you know, fifty homes that are happy with them. Um, so to, to look at this from the lens that these are old homes, they may be energy inefficient, doesn't relate to the fact that their current homeowner is there. So it's more a case of the parcel itself, the size. Um, surrounding parcels, the street, that type of thing. So really more of an individual approach.
Well, we're, we're definitely hearing the, the age discussion and I appreciate that. Uh, because I think that will broaden the conversation in terms of which parcels, the other thing that we want to emphasize is this is a, would be a voluntary basis, of course. Uh, so the idea is if people are looking at a somewhat dilapidated house, arguably uh, from any age, uh, but especially those uh, dating prior to energy codes, if we're really tying into our uh, climate uh, goals. Um, so we, we will take a closer look and in fact, um. Because the commission has previously indicated some support for this concept, we thought we would introduce a little bit of a stretch concept at this meeting. Uh, Andy, I don't know when you're going to come up to that slide, but I'll just leave that for now uh, as a tease. And then I see Commissioner Newton has her hand raised.
I believe Commissioner Green had his raised first.
Uh, oh, it was hidden behind the building. So Commissioner Green. You're muted, Phil. Still muted, Commissioner Green.
Yeah, what am I doing? Okay. Oh, there. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, when we're looking at surrounding areas, I've participated in rezoning in other cities where you sort of look at the buildings around the one you're talking, around the project. And you see what the architecture is there. And the requirement is to try to approximate that or even make it look, you know, eighteen nineties if you can, even though it's brand new, whatever. There's, there's that concept. Does that concept work in odds? Can you do, can you establish? Is it possible to establish um, a standard like that where you're actually taking into? You know, if you've got a street of Victorians, yours is going to be Victorian in style and that type of thing.
The stylistic, i- if what, that's an interesting question. I've never thought of it before. I, I would say if one of those houses fell into one of those stylistic categories perhaps. Um, certainly in terms of relating it in terms of mass and in bulk. I mean, the, the idea would be that we would have our objective design and development standards adopted. So we would know it would fall into, as you noted. Could be craftsman or Victorian or one of the other uh, styles, architectural styles on that list. Um, but we could certainly uh, uh, tab in some sort of uh, objective standards where we say you know, shall be no larger than thirty percent larger than the average home size. Uh, we are development size within X feet of the part of the structure. So that's an objective standard readily, uh, uh, gainable and would provide that direction to an applicant. Um, so I'm, I'm not sure we're going to be matching styles. And in fact, uh, Fairfax is is famous for its vernacular style, which is kind of a non-style in, in some ways. Um, but it's an interesting concept and one that we will consider further.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Newton. Chair Newton.
Hey, um, thank you guys so much. This has been really helpful and I know there's more, but uh, before I lose some of my train of thought here, um, I definitely agree. That the age of the building is not necessarily indicative of its quality of craftsmanship and construction. And we do often find that historical structures that have lasted the ages were built with a lot more, uh, you know, uh, artistry in some ways than uh, certainly post-war or uh, even more recent uh, built. So um, I definitely agree with that thought. Um, I'm curious about, you remind me with the minimum square footage for duplex would be currently and how that would be implicated by ADUs under state law.
Yeah, the, the, the minimum is seven thousand. Um, that's why we put that parameter on this uh, data analysis. Um, so that it synced up. Uh, we would start with something that allows duplexes right now.
And do we have a maximum home square footage at this point in our ordinance or not?
Uh, that's an interesting question. We, we obviously have the maximum single-family residential home size of, of thirty-five hundred square feet. We have an FAR ratio, oh gosh, you're gonna be, grab my calculator of point four oh. So if you were actually on a seven thousand square foot lot. You could only build a twenty-eight hundred square foot uh, quadplex. Um, and be within our maximum FAR. Uh, so, and then did you mention something about state standards?
Well, I just wondered about the state ADU permissive uh, allowance and how much more you add on based on those builds as a right.
Right. Uh, under the current state code, um, you can build a minimum of eight hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, or should I say eight hundred fifty square feet regardless of floor area ratio limits or any other factors on the site. So if somebody today wants to build an ADU, they could build an eight hundred and fifty square foot ADU. How it would tie into this conversation, part of what we're trying to do here also is recognize that the state has been circulating various laws to increase density by right. I mean, obviously the ADU law goes a long ways towards that. Um, but we're also seeing in the current legislature, uh, an attempt to allow people to subdivide their property into and build duplexes on each one. So essentially create quadplex zoning. Um, as a quick aside, I don't think that works very well on a previously developed site because of infrastructure and utilities. But uh, the concept is there that it's, it's, they're, they're aiming for quadplexes. So this is an attempt to basically put our stamp on what a Fairfax version of that should be.
But are all those possible by right numbers incorporated into our projections? Or are we looking for opportunity sites on top of any of that?
I think right now we're looking at things that to our knowledge are in sync with current state law. Uh, as I said, the ADU, JADU question is kind of separate from this. Um, even though uh, you'll see we're going to be talking about duplexes in a minute and I will queue up uh, how JAD or ADUs uh, work in that context already. Um, but yeah, we're, 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 this is all consistent with state law at this point.
Okay, I just wanted to understand the math a little bit better and I'm not sure I do, so uh, maybe I'll just keep working on my own to understand that. Uh, I wanted to point out that the size of the units that you're talking about. Uh, currently the, the quadplex units that you know, four units in a thirty-five hundred square foot uh, structure. Uh, eight hundred and something was the number, eight hundred something square feet per unit.
If you started with a thirty-five hundred square foot maximum single-family residential and then divided that area into a quadplex, that would be a hundred, eight hundred seventy-five square feet, I believe.
Eight hundred and seventy square, square feet. That's much bigger than the space I currently inhabit. Just FYI. And I imagine that that size of a unit would fare uh, get a pretty hefty rent in this town, just pointing that out. Then I'm wondering if I should be dividing thirty-five hundred, divided by six instead of four. Because seriously, I live in six hundred plus square feet uh, with my noisy dogs. Anyway, just throwing that out there, people. And then um, Cindy, I don't know about the you know, your comments about the off-street parking are, I think, are based on an assumption that we are not near transit in the locations that we are uh, looking at, right? I, I feel like off-street parking where the lot size will allow for it is definitely uh, and as much as we can acquire, a good idea. But at the same time, I think we have to realistically think about. And then I was noting today as I was trying to figure out and over the last few days, my commuting schedule that we have like one feeder bus that goes through two feeder buses, commuter buses that go out to the transit center. And uh, you know, I gotta catch one of those. So it looks like you can catch them at Manor or you can catch them you know, downtown, but I, I don't, I'll find out, I guess, tomorrow how many bus stops they have along Surfrance Street now. Uh, anyway, it'll be interesting. Um. So that's just on the parking, the off-street parking. I think I, I guess I have concerns when we start talking about doing this parcel by parcel that uh, that's not realistic, that we're gonna have to uh, look at other parameters. I mean, I think the, the zones that the blue zone, the RD five point five to seven is certainly a zone that we've been talking about, um. In terms of it being located downtown, if you take like Willow off because it's one way in, one way out. Oh, look at you guys. You guys are really, really good. Did you guys all catch that? You just made Willow took it off the map. Now it's back on, now it's off. Mine is Willow. I love this. All right, um. Anyway, I have some concerns about doing this parcel by parcel because I just feel like it should be zone. It should focus on these zones. Um. Those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's see, I see no other hints on this conversation, so let's just continue with the slide deck there, Andy.
Great, great. Um, did you want to stay on this slide for a minute? Is there something that?
Yeah, actually, this is, this is a good slide. Um, this was one that your commission first saw uh, in its iteration as an objective design and development standard district. I think we're going to go with district. Somebody uh, astutely pointed out that you can't have different zones, uh, meaning completely different things in a town. It just gets horribly confusing. So I think we've already got consensus with the consultant that uh, when odds come back, you'll be seeing districts. Um, the idea is what we looked at was uh, all the parcels in town that have the potential for multifamily development. And we also included based on preliminary feedback the two parcels that uh, we're not looking at at this time. And you can see those are in green um, on this map. So this includes the blue areas, which you actually didn't see because uh, you know, it's one of those things where having access to technologically brilliant people uh, capable of doing GIS maps works great until you don't have them and then you're like, ah. So we didn't have it uh, two weeks ago, but we have it now. And so you can see the various parcels that are basically uh, available, uh, at least from a zoning standpoint. And this is uh, as uh, Andy referred to in the beginning, this is the big picture. Uh, include everything and then gradually reduce uh, those parcels that we know uh, are not uh, likely or acceptable for one reason or the other uh, for that. So this just, just shows, part of it is it shows that for the most part, the parcels um, are along the major arterials uh, in the intersections of those arterials, kind of the downtown area or as we get towards a little bit higher uh, density portions of town. Um, and certainly, you know, that makes sense. It's sort of a gravity model. As you go further away from that area, the density gets lower and lower. Um, and you can see a whole bunch of zoning districts incorporated in this. Uh, and if you look at the current zoning, they do provide for the possibility of housing. So I would say as we go through this housing element update, it, the conversation with decision makers in, in, in leaders such as yourselves um, is let's look at these parcels in these zones and sort of say, ah, this, this has potential or this doesn't. Now, obviously, realistically, uh, most of these parcels are already developed. And so regardless of what we think their potential is, uh, you know, maybe someday, the reality is, is that in the next eight-year cycle, we have to focus on those areas that seem to be more realistic. But this is the overview of those parcels. And then we take it from there. Commissioner Swift has a question.
Whoops, sorry. I think in the staff report, you mentioned um, a list of zones that potentially could have multifamily residential. So some of the zones you have on here don't allow residential now. Like I believe, I don't think CH
Sure does.
Allows residential.
Yeah.
Ben, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, and this was a conversation that the commission had, um, oh gosh, what was the architect's office? Remember, you will recall uh, a couple of years ago.
Rushden Shartok?
Rushden Shartok site where the, the, the big conversation was unfortunately the CH zone doesn't allow residential on the first floor, but it does on the second floor.
Okay, I'll have to go back and, and check that because I know CL has conditional use and CC allows it on the second floor. So I'd have to go back and look at the Rushden Shartok to see if that was CC and not CH. But we probably want to double, probably want to double check the CH on that. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Green.
Um, that's a really good point about um, that. I, I felt we might want to use as a parameter here. Um, what each zoning currently allows and if um, a fourplex looks like it would be allowed under current zoning. Uh, that might be a great way to target, you know, areas for fourplexes. I mean, one of the takeaways from this meeting must be that you want to get a feel for how we feel about fourplexes. And that makes sense. I feel really positive about them for workforce housing. Um, and I also feel really positive about them if they blend in well with the neighborhood. And I'm thinking about some low-cost housing that was put in near the park, just up the road from the uh, you know, women's, and, and it's just completely different than the surrounding housing with beams that, you know, open beams in the front and things. And we want, I, I would, my, we, I can't speak for any of you else. But I, I would like to avoid that and try to make a blended feel for anything because you know, it just keeps Fairfax, Fairfax. And the reason people live here, and if we destroy the reason people are living here, we're pretty remote as we are, really, when, you know, we're the last bastion of civilization before you go west, really. After this is farm country practically. Um, despite the golf course, that won't be there much longer. So we need to recognize that and um, the, keep, keep the town, you know, um, reasonably um, stylish. Um, I don't want to say it that way because this isn't Beverly Hills. And I realize we have different kinds of architecture, but there can be something that stands out like a sore thumb, which we want to avoid. We want to avoid the, those sore thumb uh, approach. So I've seen it too many places in housing areas. So I've seen it too many places in housing areas um where maybe it doesn't matter that much because, you know, nobody cares or tourists don't go there anyway. But Fairfax kind of isn't like that. And so we need to recognize that. Thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Green, we uh noted your comment about West Hollywood. In fact, I've looked at some uh images of that and agreed that there were some really out-of-context buildings in that location. So uh we're we're very aware that i- it it all is very context-dependent. Um and the the design guidelines need to be carefully drawn to make sure that it does uh fit within the community and 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 really reflects uh the character. And Commissioner Fergoso.
There we go. Just to piggyback on that, uh West Hollywood, yes, has some sore thumbs. Uh however, it also has some of the most beautiful historic courtyard apartments and uh duplex, triplex, fourplex buildings with exquisite pathways and beautiful arches and gardens and uh uh just to uh put in a good word for West Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Newton.
Well, I was just wondering, more on a procedural note, how many more slides we might have to go through. I do want to note that we will take public comment because I want to make sure this is a workshop as much as we can uh in this, you know, Zoom uh platform.
Thank you for that comment. And perhaps what we could do is try to get through the remainder of the slideshow and then um open that up for commission comments and questions and then public comment.
Well, I might open it up for Commissioner Questions and then Public Comment.
Okay.
So I I just wanted to present this slide and and uh in the hopes of inspiring folks and recognizing that while odds, the objective design and development standards is is certainly going to help the town to keep from happening sort of the worst-case scenario. Uh we also want to flip the script and entice commissioners and the public to think about best-case scenarios because this is really an opportunity to to put into writing the vision that you might have. Especially for things that maybe are performance-based, things that um uh things like eco-villages, which these are examples of. And I know we've heard from a lot of folks who are are very encouraging about tiny homes, also micro-units. So there's there's opportunities that are available um on on a program basis to incentivize um some some really authentic, exciting things that um that are in keeping with the Fairfaxian experience. So uh we're just gonna look at the zoning map and we'll see here, these are the RD five point five to seven zones that we just talked about, the multifamily zones. Of course, this one is still including the Willow's site, which we would now remove because of the uh the dangerous roadways for consideration of any additional density. And I should be cautious with the with the term dangerous. Uh um I apologize for that. Um and here we have some fourplex examples straight from the odds and um just food for thought and for consideration, maybe in further discussion if um if there are questions, we can bring, we can come back to the site or this slide. And here we have, as Commissioner Swift had suggested, parking is is included within the diagrams that are available in the odds draft currently. Uh and and then this is, this is sort of an outlier concept and and I'll explain in a minute how this might be considered as part of a, an overall scenario. Concept of of allowing, possibly allowing for duplexes within single-family zones, keeping in mind that we've not yet used any lens of those um those earlier slides that we were looking at showing the the um the one-way-out streets. Uh so if there were to be an overlay potentially that would allow for duplexes within a single-family zone, it would be out uh within areas where there was more than one point of egress. And and here, directly from the odds, is the site plan associated with that. It's in discussion with the planning commission right now. So community favorite spots in Fairfax, I want to do a shout out to the public and and thank you so much for participating with the map that we have available online. We're we're keeping watch and paying attention and incorporating that into our internal discussions. And soon we'll also involve um a newsletter that that helps to um pay a bigger uh celebration for for all of the participation that folks have have um taken time to contribute to. This is a slide straight out of HCD, just helping everybody understand where we're where we are and where we're going. We're um beginning to identify sites and making sure that the sites that we select, that they accommodate low and very low RINA. And I, there was a question earlier about fourplex and whether or not HCD would recognize those as uh low um low-income capable. And I did some quick math and and my analysis is that um to allow for a a fourplex on a seven thousand square foot site would certainly put this in the twenty units per acre. So that would uh that that is understood as a proxy for a town in uh specifically for Fairfax. Uh it's a higher-density proxy number for urbanized areas, but for the town of Fairfax, anything that's over twenty units per acre is recognized as um a common, capable of accommodating low income. So we'll continue to discuss these steps as we move through them. And uh we want to let you know that we've got some advertising materials put together for our website. And and this is just in time for our next step, uh which is going to put uh some decision-making power into the hands of the public. And I'm gonna share a quick demo of what that is in just a minute. Um but I do want to share first the numbers that we're seeing. So we've we've got seven hundred and fifteen site visits since the beginning with a hundred and five people registering. Hallelujah. Thank you for that. And ninety-eight activated participants. So those are folks who are taking the time to fill out a survey, to um to take the poll, to share. Well, we're hoping people start sharing photos. We've got a photo contest and and uh not a photo yet. So we're hoping that somebody will, well, the odds are good these days. So if you were to um post a photo, um you would be in line for the fifty-dollar gift certificate that.
Okay.
Yes, why not, right? So share a photo of what makes Fairfax feel like home to you. And just generally, we want to encourage commissioners to um focus on outcomes in any discussions you have with the public. And and these might be questions that you could share with the public when they when they um stop you at the market. Uh what are your values? How would you solve this? And um please encourage them to share their ideas at FairfaxSpeaks.com. Ideas and questions. So now I'm gonna move on to our quick demo of the tool that we'll be hopefully launching. Well, as soon as we, as soon as we get to the place where we're ready to express some alternatives. Uh for instance, the one today that was discussed, the idea of of maybe taking those zones um that allow for duplexes and instead allowing fourplexes or even sixplexes. And this is something that that um first I'll show you what, this is what it looks like when we export from um the point of everybody participating. This is, this would be an outcome potentially for for how the public might engage with this tool. And now I'm going to share the tool itself. See. Done it. My Zoom got in the way. Let's see. Oh. I apologize. Now I've lost the screen. There we go. Thank you for your patience. So sorry, it doesn't seem to be showing. Oh, I see. Zoom popped up a new screen, so it made mine invisible. I apologize. Here we go. Now we're ready. There it is. Here we are. Okay, so this is a demo and and this um this is a tool that's being used at at um Lafayette for their housing element update, and it's called the Balancing Act. And we've got a representative right here in San Anselmo. And uh she's in the audience today. So um uh we can certainly ask Amy Flynn if there's any questions by the commissioners after I do this quick demo. So in the beginning of this, you see this pop-up and it gives a little explanation about about what this tool is. And you can even watch a video. Once somebody is, and and we could choose to do this or not, you could otherwise go directly to the site. And the way the site works is there is a um a number on the top, and Ben affectionately calls this squeezing the balloon. So we have a number that we're trying to get to. And this is a, this is a platform that was originally created for balancing a budget. So the idea is to, on balance, catch up with this deficit of housing that we're all trying to get to. So the um the activities that people can take on when they're here is they, you see, we have density allocations and we have different polygons that represent areas. So for instance, we would have potentially one polygon that would be the RD five point five to seven minus the Willow neighborhood. And somebody could click on that. And then maybe out of the three options, maybe one would be stay the same, maybe one would be allow fourplexes. Maybe one would be allow sixplexes. This is just an example. I'm not saying that's exactly what we're going to be doing. But here, on the same page, we can also include images and that could be taken directly from the odds so that there's a direct relationship between what uh they're they're voting on, essentially is what it is. And you see, when the numbers here increase, then the numbers here decrease for the number of units that are necessary in order to meet the uh the RINA requirements. And uh there's some things that make it jump much faster than others. Of course, their number is much larger than than what the town of Fairfax needs in order to uh meet the RINA requirements. But once, you can see here also, it says you do not have a housing plan. And that will will then revert and and say you do have a housing plan. Once somebody has connected with um and the number of scenarios that reach, in in Fairfax case, it would be four ninety plus some amount of buffer. Once that's the case, then you you hit submit and that gets um that gets accounted for on the back end. And we can then create reports that are shared with you as decision-makers for recommendation to council. And council can also view all of those um, all of those reports. And what we've heard back so far from other towns that have used this is uh they've decided to go forward with only those items that had more than sixty-five percent of the vote. And that made it much easier by the time it had gone to the town council to to feel confident that this is something that would be in keeping with a lot of the folks in it within the community. So that's the end of my presentation. Happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Yeah, and I'll just uh chime in at the end there, Andy, is we're excited about Balancing Act because it provides a way for people to rank their preferences. And one of our challenges here is to figure out where do people want housing, where don't they want housing? We make assumptions. Obviously, as representatives of the community uh with a a lot of knowledge of this town and its residents, you do a great job. But there's nothing like getting that information directly from people. So by having this kind of rank-ordering uh tool at people's uh beck and call, uh we turn them into little planners, which of course, as a planner, I I just love the thought of recruiting people into the into the profession, as it were. Um but it it also uh focuses it on a kind of a constructive problem-solving uh approach, uh where I think a lot of times we just hear, no, 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 no. Um and really, that's not the solution. Um so the idea is here is people can tell us, yeah, yes, here, not not there. And as Andy said, we can pick a criterion and for consideration of particular sites. So we're pretty excited about the 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 potential there. And uh once we go a little bit further with our uh development of potential sites, uh we'll get this online and and open it up to folks and see what they say.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it. Um. So do any commissioners have any questions for uh staff or our consultant, Commissioner Swift?
Um yeah, I had one question and a couple of quick comments. I double-checked on the Russian Sartok, and that was um commercial highway. So um I would ask staff to go back and look at the zones that they've got there for potential multifamily housing. Um to share Newton's comment about parking and within a half mile of of transit stop, we all know, I think, um how robust our transit is in this community. And we also have a concern already when we look even within a half mile of of transit that we know that we have constraints of evacuation safety and narrow streets and parking. Um so I think if we're going down the road of looking at multifamily housing, I think we need to be concerned about that. My question got to the staff report um in there at, I think the conclusion says that the land use and safety element work is now shifting into site analysis. And I'm, as we all are, concerned about safety in the community, and I haven't heard or seen anything related to what's been done on our safety element. So um you know, I don't know the, what staff is considering the process for that, but as we look at sites now and doing site analysis, I'm concerned that we haven't looked or seen anything on a safety element.
Right. We're we're engaged in that analysis. Um obviously, as you see the iterative process we're using to consider housing um and the constraints uh that we're developing as we go along and get feedback uh from your commission and other individuals and agencies. So we're 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 looking at that, you know, obviously evacuation routes are something that, you know, nobody gave us. We started developing that on our own. Uh I mean, there's routes, but the one-way, one-way-out aspect of it in in the degree of difficulty. So uh we're working on that and we will be coming back to your commission with conversations on that topic uh in the next few months.
Thank you. And uh any other questions for staff? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Jans.
Um, no, thank you for that presentation. What I what I really like about it, and that's also something I will make a comment um that we've talked about before, is so it it starts to become visual. Uh you can really imagine what's gonna happen. And and I think that is the purpose, that that everybody uh gets an idea of what it can look like. Um but it brings back an old uh comment. If you go into the design standards and you go to chapter eight, you can only choose five historic styles. So in other words, you cannot build a building in twenty twenty-one that looks like a building that built in twenty twenty-one. And that becomes a little awkward um when you really start to make it visual. And so um you know, my initial, I think it's much more important that we bring the tool in place. And so, you know, my initial, I think it's much more important that we bring the tool in place. We can finish the details later. But as we progress, I again, it hit me again, so I just want to share that that it might be more important than we thought.
All right. Thank you, everybody. And if any members of the public would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand to do so. And all members of the public are doing that. I'll just make a couple of quick comments. I think we could always add the avant garde as a style. I, for one, would support the avant garde being the style, but I don't know. And then Cindy, I totally 100% agree about the sites that are difficult. I think the whole purpose of looking at those one way in, one way out. And to Commissioner Fregoso's point, the ones with the narrow streets are all about bringing us down to a very limited part of our town center. You know, and to the extent that we have flats and streets that, you know, have a network of little roadways, but they're also close to downtown Villanueva Avenue or or Sir Francis Drake, they seem to be more natural. But despite what I said earlier about not wanting to do this on a parcel by parcel basis, I certainly have concerns about, for example, Commissioner Fregoso's neighborhood where those narrow streets, as she pointed out, are are may not be the difficult windy hillside roads that we've talked about, but they're certainly not areas we want to add a lot more density to. So, all right, now I'm gonna see if any members of the public have raised their hand, and I see that Rick Hamer has raised his hand. So Tamela, if you could elevate Rick Hamer to let him speak, that would be good. And Rick, if you could keep it to about three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Newton. First thing I want to expand on the one way map, which I think is a brilliant presentation. I'm really happy to have seen it. However, I would like to point out that other North Bay counties after the wildfires have already changed their 4290 roadway requirements. That's the Cal Fire roadway requirement to allow a fire engine to come in without any interruption. So in other words, the width of these roads have now changed from having turnouts to being two continuous 10-foot lanes in both directions. So no one ever has to wait for anybody. So I think it would be a prudent thing to do is to redraw that map with that 20-foot width. And when I'm saying that, I'm saying clear, including the parking, so that it can be established that a a fire engine can get in while everyone's evacuating out. Then these one-way zones are going to become something I disagree with here is that you're going to see yellow turning to red, not red turning to yellow. Because all those one ways are going to turn red once you do, once you take that into consideration. The evacuation is a very critical element to to figuring out which where the opportunity sites are. The other thing that I'm kind of confused on here is the timeline for appeals. There's an August 30th timeline, which is stated by ABAG as saying this is when jurisdictions and HCD may comment on appeals. And that's the only window of time. Well, August 30th is going to be here before you know it. So that means Fairfax can comment on anyone else's jurisdiction. I've kind of, I don't think I've brought this up directly to anyone on the commission, but but that means you can comment about Tiburon's and Tiburon's can comment about you, or or for that sake, St. Helena can comment about you. They all have letters out there on the ABAG site. And I would recommend that we we heed that deadline because once August 30th passes, it turns to public comments when the administrative side has limitations of what they can present to to have any voice in the appeal process. That's what I have today. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate your watching us and participating. It's really great. And I think we have a couple, let me see. Lynn Walsh has their hand raised. And so I think Tamela can elevate Lynn, and Lynn, you, if you could limit your remarks to about three minutes, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Chair Newton. I live on Dominga Avenue, and I saw one of the parcels that's right across my street. The street from my house is on the map, and it's a nice, large parcel. It's currently has a duplex on it. So I I appreciate your creative thinking around a really challenging issue. And I wanted to say thanks also to Ben and Andy for being out at the farmer's market yesterday. It was really nice to meet you in person. I'm sorry if I bent your ear a bit, but I have a couple of thoughts. One is, you've mentioned doing quadplexes a lot. And I just wanted to mention possibly also talking about triplexes just to make sure people are aware that there's a flexibility and fitting the 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 size and the shape and the feel of the neighborhood is super important, so not being prescriptive and starting at quadplex as the baseline. Um, I also wanted to mention that I've heard a lot about wildfires and evacuation, which is one of the main constraints for sure. But also, when I looked at the map and the parcels in that alluvial fan, flooding came to mind. A lot of those parcels are in flood, the flood zone. And so just another constraint to note, it's hard to think about flooding right now, being in a drought. But that that also will really affect the development of parcels and and what kind of insurance they're going to be able to get and what how they're going to be able to design their house and lift it and all those things. They'll be required to do that. I wanted to also just share my support for workforce housing. I think that's really important. I'm a municipal employee myself, and it comes up a lot. I don't know if you're aware of this program called the Home Match Program that's offered through COBIA. That might be something that you might be interested in looking at. It pairs people who have empty rooms or empty units like JD, JD, GADUs in their home with local workers. And it finds a good fit for people to be working locally and living locally. And then it helps people who have extra space, especially seniors in their home to have some income and just another person around to look out for them in their home or in a unit associated with their home. And then I just really, I'm really glad you mentioned the missing middle concept. And I I suggested this to Andy yesterday to do, if you're going to do some community education, to really maybe bring in some folks that champion the missing middle concept and have them do just an education piece on it. So I think it's really true that those those units that we love to walk past are usually those charming duplexes, the charming triplexes that that really show like a sense of community. And I think those are really beautiful, and they're missing. They really are. So I just wanted to share that that's a great concept to share with the public more and get that education, that concept out there. And then just last two things is just two requests. One is, if you could please make your slides available. I thought that the images were really interesting, and I want to really look at them more closely. And and then also, just one final note is, if you are going to incorporate the trail map that was put together a few years ago in the safety element, you want to double check that's that those trail maps. Because I I have a trail indicated on that map that's right on my property line where there is no trail. There is a fence. And I've pointed out to John Reed several times and the folks that made it, and it's never been edited or updated. So you just want to double check that it was done by volunteers, I believe, and God bless them, but there's a couple of errors, I think, on it. So just double check it before you incorporate it into our safety update, which really codifies it and that you want to make sure it's correct. Those are all my comments, and I really thank you for your work tonight.
Thank you so much. Again, really, really appreciate your participating and watching and commenting. It's it's exactly what we need more of as this process continues. So people should definitely be going on to the Fairfax Speaks website and getting their word in there. But this is just heartening for us, I think. So Deborah Benson, I see your hand up. I think we can, Dee Lee can be elevated here, okay? And please keep your remarks to about three minutes. That'd be great. Thanks, Deborah.
Thank you, Mimi. Thank you all for hearing me. I want to start with a question that's been raised for many, many years about the estimated 350 second units around Fairfax that have never been registered. And they could do a great job to eliminating some of the need, you know, for fulfilling these arena numbers. In the past, my most recent memory, when former manager Toy was in place, the answer was, well, we would have to go around knocking on doors. So maybe we have to go around knocking on doors. But I think that with the with the resources you all have and doing this great research, could you not include that? Also, I wanted to speak about the comment, this is going to be disjointed because I've been taking notes all the way through this. But my house is 90 years old, and it's made of old growth redwood. It's it's an old Fairfax cottage. And I've had contractors say, this house is solid. It does have old single pane windows, but I do love it. And then, again, disjointed, in regards to voting on the Balancing Act portion of your website, does a person need to identify themselves as a resident in order to be part of the data collection? My daughter graduated from Drake in 2007, and we had plans to go into Larkspur to have a celebratory dinner. However, someone knocked out a light pole on Sir Francis Drake in the afternoon. And all of the, all of the streets, the back streets along Center Boulevard, were a parking lot with people trying to get to the school. The graduation was was continued to a later time. But that was a, that was a really good example about what happens here in in an emergency. There was no one really directing traffic, but it's scary to think about if there were a fire. And then in regards to the safety element, Ben and the and the the crew of consultants came to a tree committee meeting. I don't see a clock. I'm probably running out of time where we met in a real short way. And and part of the meeting was the understanding that that the safety element would include taking out Monterey pines without a permit because they're a dangerous tree. Well, I have a real problem with that as a member of the public and as a member of the tree committee because every tree breathes in carbon dioxide and breathes out oxygen. They're all carbon sinks. And I think that if we allow the public to start taking out trees without a permit based upon their species, we're going to get into trouble. I have I have written emails from both Jason Weber, the the chief, fire chief, and also Todd Lando saying that they would never condemn a tree based on its species alone. So I think that's that's the wrong direction. I foresee people saying, oh, I thought it was a Monterey pine. Oh, they were taking out a tree. Oh, I didn't know. So I think that needs to be reviewed, you guys, and maybe more more conversation with fire around that. And I think that's all I have here on my page notes. So thank you for hearing me.
Well, thank you so much. Again, it is so much appreciated to have members of the public paying attention, keeping notes, and asking us good, very good questions. So let me see if we have any other hands raised. I don't see any other hands raised, although, hey, everybody out there in Zoom meeting land. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for any further discussion that you guys would like to have based on anything we heard tonight.
I see Commissioner Swift has her.
Yeah, Commissioner Swift, please go ahead.
Regarding the comments on the trails and the trail maps, I would be cautious as one commenter commented on on relying on the trail maps for evac, in the trails for evacuations. I would note that the evacuation maps that we have, I think, have identified some trails on them. So I would look at the evacuation maps for all of our evacuation areas to see what is listed on those. And I would use those evacuation maps to look at one way in, one way out, along with other mapping tools. But I would be very cautious about including our trails and anything like that.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Jansen and then Commissioner Green.
I I heard something that I believe is fascinating. The there are units that are existing that are not registered. So it might be wise, and those could be part of the solution. It might be wise to formulate a program to figure out how they could come into the fold. We might have already more than we know. So that I think that was a fascinating comment from Paul.
Okay, Commissioner Green and then Commissioner Fregoso.
I totally agree with Commissioner Jansen. I I think we had a discussion about that years ago, that there was supposedly no easy way to to do that, find out what units are priced what way and and get a listing and get them registered perhaps. The other, that goes hand in hand with the other idea of you know, workforce housing is very important here, especially because not too much workforce lives west of us, and a lot of people have to come a long way to get here to work. And it's it's been a concern of the Marin Economic Forum since at least 1990, when I started attending it. And what has sort of been threatened and warned about has come to fruition. And it's because our our housing is expensive. But I don't want to leave it to, gee, we can build smaller housing and meet our Rena requirements. But one thing that was said at the beginning, we have not addressed at all, and that is how to attract actual, you know, the developers to to look into that. It's going to be a little difficult. I think workforce housing developers might find renters here. But, you know, it's a, it's a fairly remote. I mean, we have young people moving in on our street, and and they say they love living here, the deer and the trees and all that. But it's a tough commute to the city, and that's true. And so workforce housing, though, who commute in here, you know, whether it's our wonderful dishwashers so that we can eat out of clean dishes, and we have to appreciate them. Whether it's our teachers who have to come here to teach and our fire and our police and, you know, all kinds of people who want to work here, it's a desirable place to work, and why not live here? Gee, if they live here, we'll get to know them. They'll get to know the community, you know, and that's a big deal. So I I'm going to have to leave the meeting if it doesn't finish by nine, but I just want to leave with that. We must be very careful about the evacuation issue and the the trails. You know, it'd be really good if we could take a look at a trail map that's accurate and perhaps designate trails that people could evacuate on. Because, you know, you get on a trail and you might forget where you're going. And you walk into something and all of a sudden it's 200 degrees and you can't do anything. We need to do that. We need to be extremely cautious about that. Mount Tam was on fire for an acre for a while this week, you know, and that, that can spread. Marin is particularly wet as western counties go. But we can't rely on the clouds to rain on our trees and fill our lakes every year. So these are, these are issues I want to raise, and I think we're addressing them. Like to see all this come to fruition, and I'm glad there's public. Thank you, public.
Thank you, Commissioner Green, Commissioner Fergoso, and then Commissioner Swift.
Thank you. Yes, I would just like to piggyback on the idea that the second unit amnesty could be a great boon for us. And I think it's easier than we think. If we provide amnesty and we don't fine and penalize people, they will come forward on their own. Because it, it's good for their own property conditions and values if they're able to maintain and, and even improve those. I would also, I love the tiny home idea. Honestly, I think tiny homes could be the solution to our homeless and lack of affordable housing. I don't know if we need specific codes to do that, or if it can somehow be worked in. I know Santa Rosa has a tiny home building code. I've not had a chance to take a look at it. I'll, I'll try to do that. But if there's any way that we can at least talk about the idea of considering tiny homes, I would love that. And then we also have some very limited, but effective live-work housing situations. One very successful one that we have developed, even though I'm not sure where it's at in terms of completion, but just another opportunity to keep in mind. Thank you. I think this has been informative meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Fergoso, Commissioner Swift, and then Commissioner Gonzalez-Harbor.
Commissioner Jansen's comments about the second units. I think the town has had a couple cycles of second unit amnesty. And it would be interesting to ask staff if they have the ability to identify how many units came through to town to become legal. Because we have had a couple rounds of that. So it'd be a good way to look and see, and it was certainly advertised to see how feasible that is going forward. And then the second comment on workforce housing is, I just want to reiterate for staff that we've talked about this before. And hopefully staff will have a comprehensive type of questionnaire or interview with current employees in town to ask questions such as, you know, if there was housing, would they move? What their current housing situation is? If they're looking for new housing, what type of housing they are looking for? You know, when we talk about quads and, and small units that are good for workforce housing, I just want to be sure that, you know, we're capturing what our workforce wants or, or needs. Because some have families, some have situations like that, that some of us don't have. So I just want to be sure that we go out and, and we talk to our current workforce to see what, from them, what they see their needs are for housing here that would make them want to move from their current location, whatever that is. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swift, Commissioner Gonzalez-Harbor, and then Commissioner Kelly.
Oops, can you hear me? Did I disappear?
Yes, you can hear me.
Okay. Um, I was gonna say, well, I wanted to start off by saying thank you for this presentation. It's, it is very helpful to start visualizing the overlays, you know, that could happen here for the opportunities. I think this is great for development. It also concerns me, you know, in terms of the evacuation and safety. It kind of actually starts to bring into focus that in an emergency, we, you know, already have a problem. And, you know, what COVID has done to our way of working, you know, a lot of people are working from home. And so in a way, the workload or the load of people trying to get out in an emergency, I think maybe needs to be looked at, you know, under these circumstances. I really think that even if COVID goes away altogether, I think the way we work has changed forever, which actually makes it more appealing to live out here, even if you are young and work in the city. I think people are starting to come out this way and, and working here part-time, you know, during the week. So I was just wondering, one, if, if it's possible, and this is not a question that needs to be asked right now, but if a traffic study could be done in case, you know, of what would happen in case of an emergency? Just to use that in any which way that you would need to use it to, I guess, prevent development because of this emergency evacuation issue? And at the same time, really focus on the amnesty program to try to identify those living units that are, you know, haven't been registered. And I think, you know, a lot of people are not willing to come out of the shadows because they're afraid that they're gonna have to pay penalties or they're gonna be obliged to make improvements. And I don't know if there's any mechanism now or in the future that would guarantee that the, you know, no, I'm not saying that we want people to live in unsafe conditions, but if there are ways to get credit without obligating people to, you know, make, I guess, to permit or to correct the work or the living environment, I, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's a very open-ended question. But I'm just thinking, why a lot of people don't come out of the shadows and register for amnesty programs? Is because they don't want to have to pay a lot of money either to be right with the town or to, you know, make an actual improvement, because it's very, very expensive. So I'm just, if there's any way to focus on the amnesty program and to somehow try to study the patterns of what would happen in case of a real emergency. So I, I know, just commuting into the city for many years, what happens when one traffic light goes out? I mean, it's just during the commute hour with, you know, everybody trying to get to school and to work. It's just, it stops everything. So just a lot to think about, you know, in terms of a real emergency. I don't think we really know. So it's just kind of big picture ideas. But thank you for this presentation. It really does bring things into focus.
Thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez-Harbor. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. I, I'd just like to point out that tonight, the conversation seems to have a more positive tone. I think that the state mandate really has the potential to put us into a defensive posture. And some of the language I've heard tonight seems much more positive, and I appreciate that. I, I have to say, from my point of view, rather than us regulating styles or how things look, I, I'm much more concerned about what, what the buildings are and what they can be. And some of the things that I heard tonight about tiny homes and live-work, and one of your slides had a title of Echo Village, is really encouraging. And Chair Newton, your, your idea of possibly even smaller units than what was being originally talked about tonight, I, I would be very encouraged by, whether we call them micro-units or maybe there is some sort of sliding scale of size of units within the same amount of bulk on the site. I think could be quite interesting and valuable. And, you know, whether we create a tiny home village that has communal farming in it or something like that, that could really be a, a positive for our town as a whole, as well as for those individuals that choose to live there. I think it would be really great. But I just wanted to point out primarily that I, I think the whole conversation tonight has been very positive, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anybody else's hand, but I also have a couple thoughts. You can always count on me to share more thoughts, you guys. So one of the things that Deborah Benson had raised was the 350 second units that have never been registered. And, you know, when I did a, a quick Airbnb search for Fairfax, I came up with 153 places to stay using Airbnb in Fairfax. I mean, just putting aside the amnesty second units, I would be curious about what is actually going on with 153 places to stay. Some of them may be somebody's bedroom, not really gonna count in a single-family home as a, another unit. But some of them are gonna be, oh, grandma's guest cottage. Come and spend a lovely weekend in Fairfax with your own suite and kitchenette. And, you know, Bob's your uncle. So I would really like to hear about us looking into that. And that's not knocking on doors. That is using the wonderful resources that we have available to us in the 21st century. Yay, 21st century. Okay, I forgot to mention in response to Cindy's comment that the Open Space Committee map has undeveloped parcels. It may not be the most up-to-date map, but we took the Marin maps where all the structures were. And if there was a parcel, which since we developed that map, maybe we've permitted some buildings on some of those properties. But for them, you can see some of the undeveloped properties in Fairfax. And obviously, we would want to confer with the Open Space Committee before we start messing with, thinking that we should be zoning things on those. I loved the sacred cows in the map where you had colored, do not touch these areas. And I think one of them was Jolly Hill, and another was Town and Country. And I was like, blah, love that. Do not touch these, that, whatever that little label was on that map was great. You know, again, I, I totally echo everybody's thoughts about the eco-villages, tiny homes, micro-units, programs. I'm gonna look at the Santa Rosa building code too, Commissioner Fergoso. So, you know, I think if there's any way we can pull in some sort of Fairfaxian-ness to this, it's, it's doing something where you're throwing tofu on your roof or something. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, well, I really appreciate the, the breadth of the comments that we got from the commission tonight. I think you've given us a lot to work on. I, I'm enthusiastic that there was a lot of focus on character preservation. But within that context, really getting creative and, and looking at what we can do, recognizing that there's a whole range of, of different types of housing that arguably could be very consistent with this community's character and certainly would probably raise fewer concerns than some of the larger multifamily developments that are also, of course, gonna be considered. And we also know that, yeah, I mean, it's, it's part of the appeal letter that I wrote to, to ABAG and HCD is, is that to ignore fire safety and evacuation risks just doesn't seem warranted. I mean, Greenville, come on. I mean, really? You know, if it's not extreme fire hazard and using the saw that, well, everybody's got that issue. Well, you know, a lot of those places are burning to the ground. So we certainly take this very, very seriously. I appreciate the comments that we had along those lines. And we will be doing additional, more in-depth analysis to try to determine, even within the areas that are potential for different types of housing options, which ones still remain as more constrained so that we can start to do those qualitative and quantitative determinations. I would also point out that I have had a conversation with the Marin Wildfire Protection Authority, Prevention Authority. And they've said that depending on where that wildfire is coming from, we may actually evacuate out west. So, yeah, one of the things that I've mentioned before is that if we're evacuating towards 101, we are the end of the line. And we've all seen the pictures of the slow-moving line of cars, even on relatively limited access routes. So we know that's not gonna be good if we're heading east. And that west option, of course, if the fire's coming from the west, I'm not sure we're gonna want to drive into it. But it, it does give one, another possible solution. And certainly that puts us at the head of the line. So just a little bit of optimism on that topic. So we will continue to work on this. In terms of schedule, we're gonna be meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee. Looks like on September 8th in the afternoon. That will be posted online. That's a public meeting. So look for that, and we welcome public participation. I will alert people that we are gonna start to focus in more on specific sites. I think we will take a really close look, Andy, at what is potential within our existing neighborhoods too. And then, of course, this is leading up to a joint meeting with the town council on the 22nd. And I think I've gotten three, three responses from commissioners. I didn't look at it today. So I apologize if more have responded, but we would love to get a quorum of the commission there. Obviously, you've done a lot more analysis and are more conversant with the conversation. So to the extent that you can represent where this discussion is, has been coming from, I think that will provide the council with some very valuable feedback. So those are our, our near-term scheduling. And as I said, we've had a lot of meetings, but it's, it's gonna start getting really interesting now. I think our site registrations, et cetera, will start to really perk up as we go forward. And that's our goal, is we want to get as many people as possible logging on. And like I said, with this balancing act tool, which we will be integrating into the site features and putting on planning hats on everybody's, within everybody's perspective and seeing what the public thinks. So we're really looking forward to that part of the exercise. And Andy, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
No, I think, I think you've covered it all. We're just excited to walk this path with you and excited about all of the new ideas and, and looking forward for more. And I do see Commissioner Swift's hand up.
I just had a question on our schedule. We haven't seen a project schedule since June. So I just wanted to see if we're still on track with that, or that's changed at all.
We're pretty much right on schedule. I have the new draft to share with Ben, and so I'll be, I'll be giving that to him.
Okay, thanks.
And we'll post that, by the way, so you'll see that. But that's why I wanted to focus on the next few meetings, because those are firm dates. You know, the rest is a little bit, kind of ranges and things like that. But the, the, the firm dates, I think, where people say, okay, let's see what they're up to next time. Those are the dates where you'll see it, so. So thank you all very much. I know I've been putting this commission through a lot, and we're not at the end of the tunnel yet. But I do deeply appreciate your commitment, and hopefully other people do as well. And of course, this is so crucial. And of course, this is so crucial to the future of Fairfax and I feel like we're already making progress on protecting what's near and dear to Fairfaxians and at the same time, addressing some of our critical housing needs. And I don't know if you have anything else to add, Chair?
Andy, remind me if we had introduced Lauren to the rest of the planning commission previously. And I don't want to put Lauren on the spot. But I don't know if Commissioner Swift and I met Lauren at the, at our little subcommittee meeting, but I don't think she'd been introduced to the rest of the planning commission. Hey, Lauren.
Hi, nice to meet everybody. Been taking copious minute notes here, so excited to share those with you all.
Yeah.
And Lauren will be one of the people, that members of the public, when they communicate with us. She's, she's on it. So that's part of our responsiveness and getting information. Obviously, as we start to get into a really active phase, we'll be providing new information and we know it's really important to stay on top of the, the questions and get the information out and things like that. So we're really glad to have Lauren part of the team helping us out.
All right, thank you. And with that, I would entertain a motion for an adjournment.
A move that we adjourn. An excellent meeting.
I said it.
Thank you. Motion, Commissioner Fregoso, Second Commissioner Gonzalez-Parver, all in favor? Please say that.
All right.
Hi.
Any opposed? Great, unanimous on Zoom. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.